All right, everybody, get those microphones on and get them stationary, please. That way we don't have a lot of noise interruption.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you would, take your microphone.
Mr. Braun.
Present.
Ms. Paesnick.
Present.
Ms. R. Klum.
Present.
Ms. Sebacher.
Present.
Mr. Shiverducker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
And Mr. Washington.
Here.
Eight council members present.
Thank you. We have our own Mike Holtermann here to do the invocation. If you would stand up.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for our city council. We thank you for our city leaders. We thank you for our county leaders. We thank you for every individual that has come tonight. We thank you for your wisdom and guidance and the decisions made tonight. And we thank you, Lord, for helping us to make the decisions that are pleasing to you and bring glory and honor to your name. And we ask these things in the name of Jesus and for your glory. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of liberty and the Constitution of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If everyone would try to silence your phones, please. Okay, we'll get this started. I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. This is quite a hot topic. We always love to see our citizens come out to see what we do here. So the topic tonight, of course, is the mask ordinance. I will go over kind of the process we'll use tonight so everyone knows what's expected of them. Speakers will be permitted based on the order they have pre-registered. And the council will hear as many as possible in the time allotted for comments and visitors. We'll go probably a little bit past seven if we need to. So each speaker will have four minutes to speak either in opposition or in favor of proposing a face covering ordinance. And we ask that you keep your comments civil and respectful at all times. The city clerk will administer a timer and will alert you when you have one minute remaining, as well as when your time is expired. The city council will not interact with you during this time. We know that, but know that we will take your words and countless number of phone calls, emails, Facebook messages, texts, we've gotten it all. So we'll take that all into consideration. If you're unable to speak this evening, you may still contact the mayor, the city council by visiting our city website at FultonMo.org or by contacting the city clerk's office at 592-3111. So at this time, Madam Clerk, if you would, call our first speaker.
Okay, I want to note that we have a total of 16 speakers tonight that we'll be getting through. We did have one additional speaker that did not choose whether in favor or against, so that person is not included on this list. We'll begin with the favor, and I'll be calling Beth Snyder of 825 Court.
All the way up. Hi, I'm Beth Snyder. 825 Court Street is my address. And I am here tonight to speak in favor of the mask ordinance. That is my personal opinion that we should all be wearing masks. I realize that that's not likely to pass, that a full-on ordinance is not likely to pass, so I'm hoping that we can come to some compromises. First of all, there are some facts. The virus is real. Some people do react very violently to it and don't make it through. And masks do help. And I spoke last week to you all and felt very strongly. And in the weeks since, I've had so many conversations with lots of people. One of the other gentlemen who spoke last week, Kurt Klydens, had some really good points. He owns a private business, and he said he doesn't want to have to be, have to do that in his business. And I actually really understand that, where he's coming from. I maybe don't agree with it, but I don't have to visit that private business, and that's my choice. So all that to say, like, when people are talking about their liberties being taken away, I'm a little disheartened when people argue that. Because the mask helps you a little bit, but it helps everyone around you a lot. So I feel like my liberty to not be infected, to remove myself from the germs, is just as important as anyone else's right to not wear the mask. So I would recommend, what I'm looking for is that there be a recommendation, an official recommendation from the city. I wish it didn't have to be legislated. I wish people just did the right thing and cared about other people around them. That's how I feel about it, that it's due unto others, it's a golden rule issue, much more than it is a right to wear a mask or not. Just to be clear, you don't have to wear it at home. I would like for people to wear it in a public place that I have to go to. I have to go to the grocery store because we don't have food delivery in this small town. I have to come here. I have to go to the post office. I need to go to the bank. I do not have to walk into One Canoe Two Paperie. So we require masks in there, and if you don't want to come in, if you don't want to have to wear a mask, you don't have to come in. That's your choice. The problem is that when we're splitting this, and it's become so political, it's really a public health issue, and it's a kindness-to-your-neighbors issue. And so we're splitting it. You can go in businesses if you don't want to wear a mask, or you do, or whatever. We're too small of a community, business-wise and economically, to not have all of us supporting these businesses. China Palace is closed for lunch because it couldn't get enough people in there. I feel that a recommendation from city council, but also from the county, would be really helpful in encouraging us socially to do the right thing. The more people that wear masks, the more common it is. It won't feel so awkward. If those of us who are in leadership roles and see a lot of people, I'm the boss at my work, so I have to wear a mask. Even though I'm in my office, if I want my people to wear it, that's what I do.
Ms. Snyder, you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. So in summary, I would like there to be an official recommendation. Every week or every day that the updates for the COVID-19 go out from the county and from the city, when it says you need to wash your hands for 20 seconds, you need to socially distance, I also want it to say, wear a mask when you're in public. So that's, those are my requests, and I'm thinking that if we don't enforce rules on private businesses, that maybe this is a compromise that we can come to. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
All right, our next speaker will be John Dreyer II of 707 Jefferson.
Good evening. It's good to see you all. I am not in favor of the city of Fulton mandating that people wear a mask. Experts have mixed answers. To start with, there are two types of coronavirus. The first is seasonal virus, such as a common cold, common flu. That mask may have some effect in reducing the possibility of getting that. But we are, but have we ever worn masks to stop the common cold or the flu? Or has it been just accepted as a stage of life? Treated with rest, good nutrition, Tylenol, and coughing and sneezing into a Kleenex or into your shirt sleeve. The second is SARS-CoV-19. The experts have found that of either surgical or fabric mask on reducing the spread has no effect. The evidence of the efficiency of surgical or homemade mask is limited, and masks are not the most important protection against the coronavirus. Face mask basics. Nalal masks are created equal. N95 masks are the most effective in preventing the spread of the coronavirus. But these masks are expensive, supply is limited, and it's best regulated to healthcare workers. They must be properly fitted, sealed to the face to filter out 95% of the viral particles. They are difficult to fit, and the serum disease control does not recommend for the general public. Okay, and they need to be routinely cleaned or sanitized. Due to the shortages of facial masks and stuff, paper masks do not seal against 100%. 70% of the air that we breathe flows through the mask, which is good, but 30% travels outside and around the mask. Okay. With all this leakage in surgical and fabric masks are why the public health officials don't believe that wearing these masks does the most effective job in stopping the coronavirus. In addition, humidity that collects on the masks acts like a transport to carry the virus from outside to inside and then from inside to outside. The masks, thus, those masks must be discarded when they are humidified or washed to kill any virus. Efficiency of face mask. One study by the South Korean researchers show that people coughing 7.8 inches from a Petri dish with ala mask or others with a mask neither meaningfully decrease the viral load coughed onto the dishes. Social distancing. Public health officials do believe that-
Mr. Dreyer, you have one minute remaining.
Do believe six feet apart does help prevent the spread. Do you do good public teaching? General public has adapted well to that. What are the odds of getting the coronavirus? Experts around the world say 1.5% to 3.5%. So for 100 people, 1.5 to 3.5 will contact the virus. How many will die? Like with 100,000 people, it is 37 people will die from the mask, from the coronavirus out of 100,000. And so I'll end there. I have just a few other things, but I'll just end there. And I think it's a privilege to be able to be here and to be a part of our government. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, moving ahead, we'll have Whit McHosker from 3207 Tanglewood Way. I'm sorry, Whit. Mr. McHosker.
I've handed out some forms for the council member to kind of see what my comments are about. I'm basically going to give rationale for a mask-wearing policy or protocol in Fulton. I think there's some compelling statistics and trends right now that we should be very aware of. First of all, there's a current surge in cases, particularly in the southern heavily populated states, reveals the risk in complacently is emerging too early. We also should recognize that vaccines are months away from being available, and a timeline for vaccinating the entire population is currently indeterminable. If you look at the data from the University of Washington Institute of Health Metrics and Evaluations, that contradict what the earlier speaker had to say about trends in the coronavirus. If you look at the projections as of, for the United States, as of July 14th, there are 141,000 deaths, which represents almost a quarter of the world population. By November 1st, they are projecting it to be 224,000 if a universal mask policy is not implemented. If universal masks are implemented, it would be about 188,000, which would be an increase less than half of what it'd be without the mask. Missouri currently has incurred 1,147 deaths. Without a mask policy, that would rise 45% to 1,659 by November 1st. With a mask policy, it would lower the death count by 259 to 1,400. Now, Callaway County has enjoyed a very low incidence of cases and deaths, but that could easily change. Why? Because there will be approximately 2,000 or more college students returning to Fulton in August and this fall. Questions we need to ask ourselves are what will be the visitation policies by families of students? There's some major concerns along with this. Uncertainty over how successful colleges will manage this large migration into Fulton, and how well students will conduct their social distancing. We also need to be aware of the uncertainty over how several thousand Callaway County public school students will return to school, be transported safely, and conduct social distancing. Been a lot of mixed messaging from the U.S. federal authorities on proper protection, and this has been behind the unexpected surge in most states in the nation. Those nations, economically developed, particularly Japan, South Korea, Canada, Argentina, Germany, China, France, have successfully conducted mask-wearing and significantly reduced cases and trends.
Mr. McHosker, you have one minute remaining.
Yes. Those countries like the United Kingdom, Brazil, and Russia have lagged behind, and the cases have spiraled. Second page there kind of sums up some of the statistics. The United States has only tested 15% of its population and has not tested the most per million of population. We only ranked 23rd. Bottom line, an effective mask-wearing policy in public now may be the only chance to establish protocol and expected behavior among this large influx of students. Should Fulton and Callaway County fail to maintain its excellent record so far and move towards the mean, there would be an incalculable damage to small businesses in this community. In the last two pages, you have the graphs of the trends in the United States, and the second page is Missouri. And you can see without a universal mask policy, the trend still continues upward.
Thank you, Whit.
Thank you. All right, we'll move forward next with Anna Dreyer Coilen. Apologize if I mispronounced that.
Oh, you're good. I'm 5'2", I'm sorry. All right. So this is why I'm against masks. This epidemic has been going on since the beginning of 2020. We have all been doing our best to prevent the spread of COVID-19. These ways include washing hands, wearing gloves, germs, soap and water, and the well-known face mask. Today, I stand here to tell you my thoughts and feelings on this matter. I know we are trying to prevent the spread of coronavirus, but have you thought about the people around this town who work 10-hour shifts? A mask is usually required at a job, and everyone is fine with that. But as those 10 hours go by, people sweat, moisture collects, and they breathe out carbon dioxide, which in some cases does make it harder to breathe. To add on to this, I can speak for the people around me who suffer from asthma. Some people with asthma may experience discomfort or have trouble breathing while wearing a face mask. At my job with asthma, I will be wearing my face mask and find that it starts to get hard to breathe. At times, I wheeze because of the heat. According to the CDC, a face mask may not be the best for everyone. This includes children under 2, anyone who has trouble breathing, anyone who is unconscious, unable to help themselves, or can't remove the mask. Michelle from Waihawa, Hawaii, suffering from chronic asthma, said she goes to dialysis three times a week and must keep her mask on for up to four hours during treatment. She said, and I quote, "I've been lightheaded and dizzy in there. Yesterday, my pulmonologist told me that's what causes me to get dizzy in the face and no oxygen circulating in my brain." Her ending quote was, and I think I can say this for everyone, "We need to breathe freely, and people are not letting us do that, especially people with asthma. The air we breathe has to be clean, and it has to circulate around us. In conclusion, this is America. How can forcing socialism on our town with masks give a choice? From the words of a wise man, let's make America great again." Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Virginia McHosker, 3207 Tanglewood Way.
Hi there. Thank you for this opportunity to express my opinions. I am in favor. Can you hear me? Okay.
Get close.
Okay. I am in favor of a mask ordinance. The cases in Callaway County have been rising since the Fourth of July holiday. In six days, they jumped from 62 cases last week to 81 today. This is a disturbing trend, and even more concerning is how our numbers may increase when the college students return. It is true that the initial message from the CDC was not to wear them. As the pandemic progressed, however, it became clear that a person without symptoms could infect another person simply with their breath. At that point, the message changed. Now, all the research shows that masks do slow the spread of the disease. If everyone wore a mask for eight weeks, we could significantly slow the growth of the virus, as has been seen in other countries. This is evidenced by the salon in Springfield, Missouri, in which two stylists, both positive for the virus, did not infect their 139 clients because all were wearing masks. It is also true that the majority of people will not get very sick with COVID. I personally do not want to get it. I don't want my family members to get it, my friends, or my customers. Last week, I began requiring my customers to wear masks. With very few exceptions, all complied. The people that refused and left the shop were not people that I had ever seen before. The majority of my customers had a mask on when they arrived. For those that didn't, I had disposable masks for them to wear. I thanked them for wearing a mask, and they all acted pleased to do it. My impressions, my impression is that there are more people who are not opposed to wearing a mask. One complaint is that a mask ordinance impinges on the rights of those that are against us, against it. To that, I say we all have rights. My customers have the right to be able to shop without having to worry about becoming infected by the person in the store with them who comes in and refuses to wear a mask. Also, laws are passed all the time that require certain behavior for public safety. Speed limits and seat belts are an example of that. And finally, should we not be able to get the virus under control, it is certainly possible that I will have to close my shop again. As we approach the fourth quarter, this could be particularly devastating for me. 40% of my annual sales occur during the fourth quarter. That is a huge amount to lose should I have to close. It is also important to note that I also collect 40% of the amount of my annual sales tax during the fourth quarter. Should I and other nonessential businesses have to close, that will be a huge loss of revenue for the city and the county.
You have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Even the essential businesses will see less income and collection of sales tax. We need the mask ordinance to protect our health, but also to protect our economy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Virginia.
Okay, our next speaker will be Elizabeth Williams of 455 Law Courts.
Thank you for letting me speak. The Association of Physicians and Surgeons has concluded from a study they have done that masks are ineffective at stopping COVID because of the particle size of COVID. Particle size is .125 micrometers, and influenza particle size is .08 to .012. The N95 masks are ineffective down to .3 micrometers, which is far larger than COVID. Who would put a chain-link fence to keep out a mosquito, which is an appropriate analogy to these masks? General masks are completely ineffective against COVID. Conclusion: Wearing masks will not reduce SARS or COVID. Masks may give people a false sense of security. If masks have been the solution in Asia, shouldn't they have stopped the pandemic before it spread elsewhere? Since the majority of the population that is subjected to communism wears masks. Masks are actually dangerous to human health for many reasons. When wearing masks, you only get 70% oxygen. This is just breeding ground for hypertension. If you already have any condition, masks will worsen your condition since all organs need oxygen for proper functioning. I saw an experiment where someone wore a mask and used a carbon dioxide meter to measure within 30 seconds the carbon dioxide being inhaled was at a toxic level, far above the OSHA limits for safety. In fact, the limits of carbon dioxide went so high that the meter stopped reading them. The media only talks about cases and doesn't identify asymptomatic cases. They do not focus on the deaths. If they did, this whole pandemic couldn't be considered a pandemic any longer. There has been one death in Callaway County. Where is the discussion about prevention, like upping your vitamin D and C? The president stated in one of his news conferences that COVID will die in 30 seconds to one minute in the heat and sunshine. Why are we not told to just go outside in the sun? There is another very important factor to consider with these masks. How it gives criminals, Antifa, age-up provocateurs for Black Lives Matters and other groups the audacity and arrogance to engage in criminal behavior and make it more difficult to jail these terrorists. There have recently been stories of teenagers wearing masks and dressing up as older people to buy alcohol illegally. to buy alcohol illegally. People want to feel safe in their community, and wearing masks makes it a more dangerous community. Just yesterday, a man dressed as a FedEx worker with a mask shot and killed the son of a judge and critically wounded her husband. What about the people who conceal and carry? It is illegal for these people to wear masks, as it should be. Also, there are disabled Americans and people who have medical conditions or religious objections to wearing masks. If people want to wear masks, it should be voluntary, but never mandatory. Americans have a right to carry weapons if they are doing so in a lawful manner. Socialism or communist officials will not come to people's door and ask for their rights. No one would give them away. They do it by infiltration from within or chipping away at our rights little by little. One day, you will turn around and realize that our rights as free citizens have been taken if we don't stop the chipping away of rights when they happen, just like wearing a mask.
Ms. Williams, you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. We already have an answer for COVID: hydroxychloroquine, azithromycin, and zinc. Many states have used this successfully, including our own president. On any given day, 42,000 doses of a hydroxychloroquine are given to our soldiers. Where is the pile of dead soldiers? There isn't any, because it works, and if it did kill these soldiers, the media would be all over it. Bolivia is using chlorine dioxide for COVID. The media tells that this is a toxic bleach. This has been used for a very long time to clean water. There are many other things that can help COVID. All you have to do is do your research for yourself, and don't hand over your sovereignty to people or officials who don't have your best interest in mind. COVID is less deadly than the yearly flu. If you look at the death rates from the CDC, the fear is placed in people's heads who don't do the research and only listen to the media. Six corporations own all of the media. When looking at any subject, it's best to look at both sides of the issue and try to be neutral until it's properly researched. We're being emotionally triggered by the media.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Your time is expired.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Adam Kilmer from 1502 Forest Avenue.
All right. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak here. I was, oh, thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
I was planning on coming out here and reading to you the results of a lot of scientific studies. The Lancet has recently published a review of 172 studies on the effectiveness of masks at stopping viruses like the coronavirus and including coronavirus. They all say that it works, but I think that you guys already know that, and I think that my fellow Fultonians are doing a good job at relaying the results of these scientific tests to you. So instead, I'm going to cut to the chase. On July 14th, the White House Coronavirus Task Force declared that Missouri is in what they call the Yellow Zone. That means that we are at immediate threat of becoming an outbreak center. And they left us with the following instructions. These are excerpts. Policy recommendations for counties in the Yellow Zone in order to preempt exponential community spread: Wear a mask at all times outside the home and maintain physical distance. Limit social gatherings to 25 people or fewer. Do not go to bars or nightclubs. Limit gyms to 25% occupancy and close bars. Ensure that all business retailers and personal services require masks and can safely socially distance. These are policy requirements, not requests. This is not coming from some alarmist hippie on Facebook, and it could not possibly be farther from that. This is President Trump's own hand-picked coronavirus task force asking us to pass a mask ordinance. And I wanted to repeat the importance of everyone wearing masks, not just a few, because the results of these studies, a mask like this can stop, reduces my chances of getting the virus by 30, maybe 50%, but it reduces my chances of transmitting it to you by 89 to 90%. That is outstanding. And let me repeat that one more time. A mask like this does not protect me from you. It protects you from me. That is why we need everyone to wear it, not just a few. And a lot of states are understanding this. That is why Kansas, Kentucky, Arkansas, Alabama, Texas, West Virginia, heck, even Mississippi, has a statewide mask ordinance, and we do not. And in my home state of Indiana, where I was born, this is my home now, we don't have a statewide mask ordinance there. And so individual counties and individual cities
Mr. Kilmer, you have one minute remaining.
are picking up the slack by placing, putting in place their own ordinances. Individual communities and churches are making handmade masks, like the one I'm wearing. My mother's sewing machine has been going nonstop. So I would just like you all to think twice about this and understand that there is not nearly as much controversy as you have been led to believe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker will be Kevin Langworthy of the Post Office Bar and Grill. Okay, Kevin, not here. All right, well then, I will go ahead and move down the opposition list and go to Sandra Dreyer of 707 Jefferson.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and represent my opinion. I vote no for the masks for several reasons. One, masks, as we've heard many statistics, there are cloth, there are surgical disposable, and there are the N95. And because of availability, we're going to be wearing cloth or wearing the disposable surgical mask as we see in this room. Okay, this is one factor in preventing the coronavirus. Masks, one of the pro-things about them is to help us reduce our face was one of the reasons. Well, I wear one at my work and for most of the day, and I'm constantly having fogged-over glasses, and I struggle with not touching my face, which could also be a way to transmit the virus. Secondly, handwashing and hand sanitizer use is vital. Is that going to be enforced? Are we going to have a time limit on how often we need to wash our hands? I realize it's very hard to monitor that, but it is equally as important as the mask. Social distancing, avoiding large groups, and staying six feet apart, is that going to be mandated? I was very glad to hear that Fulton canceled the street fair, because I said it's a COVID party for sure, so thank you for canceling that. If you're sick, stay home. People have to use some common sense. Don't go shopping. Don't go out. In the beginning, we were told to stay home, don't go shopping more than once a week, and I know a lot of people are getting away from that. I understand the economy, but we can also spend less money that we may not be getting because many people are unemployed. Each person needs to take responsibility for preventing the spread of the virus for themselves, to their loved ones, to their neighbor, to those around you. And if you want to wear a mask, by all means, do it. If you have an employer who wants you to wear a mask, do it. And I do work for an employer who requires it, and I'm very glad to comply to protect those that we serve. If you're a restaurant owner and you want people to wear a mask, then do it. Use signage throughout the city. I have seen some of that good signage, like down by the roundabout, that COVID-19 precautions were in effect, and it was a good reminder. I'd like to see more of that throughout our community. And going to the swimming pool, I was glad that the city has taken action to have fewer people there so you can spread out. Nope, not wearing a mask in the swimming pool, but we're getting good fresh air, and we're in a pool of bleach water.
Ms. Dreyer, you have one minute remaining.
Okay, and with that, I conclude, this is the United States of America. It is a democracy. We have freedom of choice. Let each individual decide if they want to wear a mask.
Our next speaker will be Bill Guinea of 10 East Ninth Street. And again, I apologize if I said that incorrectly.
It's okay. My name is Bill Guinea. I live here in Fulton. I'm a former professor at Westminster College. I'm retired now, but years ago, I often was late getting to work or thought I was late, and so drove rather rapidly, and on two separate occasions, I caused an automobile accident at the corner of Ninth and Court Street. You guys or somebody decided to put a stop sign at that corner. I didn't much like it because it interfered with me and slowed me down and so on, but I haven't run into anybody else's car since. A number of people here have talked about their rights, their rights to not wear a mask, and how their freedoms will be restricted and those kinds of things if they're required to do so, and they're absolutely right about that. However, with every right we have, we also have responsibilities. You know, I might enjoy the freedom of being able to zoom through that intersection, but I have a responsibility to anybody else that's on the road not to do so. The primary function of legal requirements, and we have hundreds, thousands of them, is to keep people following their responsibilities, especially in cases where they might not do so voluntarily. For instance, I might enjoy the freedom of walking around naked in public. Certainly, pants are more restrictive than a mask. And yet, I don't do so because I have a certain responsibility to my fellow citizens. And I must mention the fact that despite the fact that it might be vulgar and offensive for me to walk around without pants on, at least it wouldn't kill anybody. Wearing a mask during a time of national crisis, of a pandemic, which I must mention that the experts, that the overwhelming consensus of epidemiologists, infectious disease experts, and public health officials indicate that wearing masks reduces the spread of this deadly disease, and they also consider it a deadly disease. It's an inconvenience. It's not much fun to wear a mask, but it's something we need to do to protect each other. And in this case, I would argue that the tiny right of not having to cover up my face is easily trumped by my responsibility not to kill anyone. You know, I can be completely symptom-free, not know that there's anything wrong with me. For the last several months, Fulton residents could have voluntarily lived up to their responsibilities and worn masks in public. You know, that's the argument that says, let everybody choose for themselves. Well, they could have. But if you went to Walmart before yesterday, you would find out that overwhelmingly, we did not. We did not live up to our responsibility. We're not going to do it voluntarily. And in a case like this, we need to. I would argue, in fact, that if we don't come up with a mandate of some kind, a restriction, a regulation, whatever you want to call it, if we don't come up with a rule that says that Fulton residents, who are not particularly prone to illness or problems because of it, those who are not, need to wear a mask in public. If we don't come up with such a rule, then the next time somebody dies, we have to ask whether we are complicit in his or her death. Personally, I think that making the entire city, the entire state for that matter, suffer minor inconveniences of wearing a mask is much less of a problem than having even one citizen die.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I would ask as well, when someone is speaking, if we could please keep personal chatter to a minimum, that would be very helpful. All right, we'll move back over to the opposition side. Mr. Mark Alexander from 2 Ann Street.
Mark Alexander. I have been following this very intently for quite some time. I do believe that the mainstream movement has been used as a political tool to propagate this to the extreme, that they are propagating this coronavirus. For example, recently, there's been an increase in cases lately. And when I do more research, rather than just listening to the mainstream media rhetoric all day in and day out, I listen to all the alternative sources, including senators from in Missouri and congressmen here in the state, in other states, that are aware that there is a deception in the increase in cases. Because the tests that they use, these tests, they have antibody tests, and then they have the swab tests that look for genetic material, and they cannot distinguish. And it says so right on the packaging of these tests, that they do not distinguish between this coronavirus or COVID-19 or really any other antibodies in the family of coronaviruses. All colds are coronaviruses. And so recently, everybody, they busted them down in Florida. The president busted them. The number of cases went to like from 900 to 90, just like that. Other states too, they have been busting them for raking the numbers. Like everybody that tests now, the testing, the rate that they say, oh, they have COVID, is at 100%. Everybody that tests, well, okay, you've got, you know, you're testing positive. But when you look at the graphs of
Mr. Alexander, you have one minute remaining.
Okay, so the number of actual illnesses from COVID and deaths have gone way down, almost to zero. But the tests, but the testing, the more they test, oh, they're finding new cases, all right. But they could all be testing for the common cold, because these tests did not distinguish between COVID-19 or the common cold or any other virus. They just dumped. And so it's up to the disposition of whoever, you know. They are urged to write COVID, because there's a political agenda, a leftist political agenda behind this, because they own the mainstream media. These people that are at the very top, these billionaires, they own all of the mainstream media and their subsidies. They tell them what to say, and they have given this narrative. Okay, thank you very much, and I do respect all of you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Sue Rouschka from 10 East Ninth Street.
Thank you. Wearing face masks is so easy. If everyone does it, the spread of the virus is greatly reduced. This is the best outcome, and it's something each and every person can actually do. The last few hours of her life, my mother was on a ventilator. It was years ago, not due to COVID. We now know that some people sick with the virus will require a ventilator, and there's no guarantee they will make it. I will never forget that machine pushing oxygen into her body, her chest rising and falling with the corresponding noise from the ventilator pumping. I don't want to go there if I can avoid it. I don't want my husband to go there. I don't want my neighbor to go there. I don't want anyone in my community to need a ventilator. We know face masks stop the spread of the virus, and it's easy to wear a face mask. I work at the public library. I'm feeling much more comfortable at work since face masks are now required. For those library patrons unable to wear a face mask or unwilling to wear a face mask, we provide services curbside. People want everything to be normal, like it was before the People want everything to be normal, like it was before the virus. No one likes the new normal. I haven't met anyone who likes wearing a face mask, but it's necessary. Wearing a mask is necessary to stop the spread. Wearing a mask says you care about members of your community. A friend shared this with me, and I'll share it. Remember when we went to restaurants before smoking was not allowed? Even before smoking in non-smoking sections? You would come home from a restaurant and smell of smoke on your clothing, and you wanted to change your clothes. Think of the virus like that, like smoke. Except, you can see smoke, you can smell smoke, the virus is invisible. You cannot see it, you cannot smell it, but it's there. It's not just on your clothing, and you're breathing it in if you're not wearing a face mask. As for shopping locally and supporting local businesses, my husband and I have been shopping locally despite the lack of masks being worn. Before Monday, I could not get in and out of Walmart fast enough. It looked to me like 90% of the people do not wear masks. I haven't been there since the new requirement at Walmart on Monday. Since the lockdown, we started ordering takeout food from local restaurants at places we normally went to eat inside. However, we've noticed there are only a few restaurants in Fulton whose waitstaff wear face masks. That matters to me.
Ms. Ruchka, you have one minute remaining.
It matters a lot that they care enough about my safety that they wear a mask. This city council meeting is a wake-up call. If businesses locally do not require face masks, I'm seriously considering boycotting. Yes, I will drive 20 miles, 30 minutes to shop. This will become another new normal for me. Yesterday, I got to see my daughter and her husband for a couple hours. I only get to see them once a year. They travel to Missouri from their home in Hawaii. We picked up takeout food and went to the park and visited at a picnic table. They came home to Missouri to visit family and friends. At their home in Hawaii, face masks are mandatory since April 1st. Take a look at Hawaii's low numbers. Masks work. Our daughter said everyone in Hawaii wears a mask everywhere, and they're used to it now. She's amazed at the difference in what's happening here. As for me...
Ms. Ruchka, your time has expired.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker will be Michelle Kruger from 804 Nichols. I'm sorry, Michelle Kruger, 804 Nichols.
I got two more. Thank you very much. Good evening. I do not believe in forcing someone to wear a mask. It should be a personal choice. If businesses want to require masks, that is their right to do so. Government should not be involved. The number of cases in our whole county, let alone in our city, does not warrant an ordinance. Doctors make recommendations to their patients all the time. Some do what the doctor says, some don't, and that's out of the doctor's control. He can't force them to do what he says, he can only recommend what is best for their health. That is what's happening here. Doctors have made recommendations, we, the patients, can choose to follow the recommendations or not. Nobody can control what we choose to do in this situation. Some people are concerned about the return of college students. I can understand that. Businesses have a responsibility to limit the number of customers and enforce social distancing. Most of the photos and videos that we have seen show overcrowding and no social distancing whatsoever. If the businesses would adhere to the social distancing recommendations, I believe we would not have the problems that we are having. I don't know how you all would enforce such an ordinance. Would the police show up at the park because someone isn't wearing a mask? Are they going to set up mask traps instead of speed traps? If these sound ridiculous, it's because they are. We don't care if somebody goes out and kills their unborn baby, but if you don't wear a mask, suddenly you're a criminal. We all need to take responsibility for our choices. But what is right for me may not be right for my neighbor, or even for others in my own family. I'm the only person in my family who chooses to wear a mask in certain situations. I will wear it in places like this. I will not wear it when I'm just outside. I take it off as soon as I'm out of a building, and I will not wear it in church or when I am in a sit-down restaurant with my family. I believe we need to be enforcing the social distancing rule before we start telling everybody to put on a mask the minute they step foot out of their front door. We hear all the time with all kinds of social issues, "Don't force your beliefs on me." Thank you.
All right, our next speaker will be Billy Ray Kennedy from 718 Bluff Street. Mr. Kennedy.
I'm Billy Ray Kennedy. I drive over the road in approximately 40 states for Callaway carriers. I've seen in every state, like Detroit, Michigan, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, I've seen cities that took three to four hours to get through normally, between 5:00 and 8:00 in the morning, between 3:00 and 7:00 of an evening, that I drove through in like 35 minutes. Every state that I've been in, and I was in Illinois when this first started, okay, we was asked, told, however you want to say it, to be compliant with masks. I've seen it, masks make a difference. If you want to do some statistics, check and see how many truck drivers has gotten sick. Because we use masks, we cleaned our trucks three, four times a day, wiped them down with disinfectants, used Vaseline on our hands before we went in and touched doors, because in 1983 to 1985, I held a C in water and wastewater. And in wastewater and water, you have all kinds of diseases that you have potential contact of. Microorganisms and bacteria cannot live in petroleum products. Vaseline, that's what our, that's what our wastewater, he was a PhD guy. He said, "What are you gonna do?" He said, "If you're working on a pump, and you said, 'You got your rubber gloves on,'" and he said, "The rich slips," and he said, "You cut it. What are you gonna do?" Well, hey, most of us was from rural communities. We said, "Well, wash our hands." He said, "You're already infected." He said, "Put Vaseline on before you put your rubber gloves on, so if something happens, you don't get infected." And if you don't have Vaseline, he said, "You surely got a tube of gun grease in your utility truck." He said, "Anything petroleum products. If the bacteria cannot get penetrate your skin, it can't get to your blood system." Okay? So...
Mr. Kennedy, you have one minute.
I'm here to say, masks make a difference. Yes, they're not 100% effective, but they make a difference. Okay? The biggest thing I have is, my generation, older generations, hey, we've kind of made a mess of this world, country, but our children are the future of this country. It started out that children, school, school kids, was not getting infected. Now they are. Okay? That's our future. Now what are we gonna do when 50% of them die off? And who's left to make things better for the new solution of viruses to, you know, to a better thing? But here's something I got to ask somebody, everybody. Who believes in Russian roulette? You know, where you put one bullet in, spin the chamber, and put it to your head?
Mr. Kennedy, your time has expired.
That's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our final speaker for the opposition is Kurt Kleindens on behalf of 54 Country.
My name is Kurt Kleindens. I live at 4599 State Road KK, and I'm the owner of 54 Country here in Fulton. I'd like to start by thanking the council and the mayor for your time for letting me speak, and I would also like to apologize for the tone in which I ended last week's meeting. I am concerned that a mask ordinance could have and would have serious effects on our business at 54 Country, to the extent that it would put us out of business. Our city and county have not been overwhelmed by COVID-19 thus far. We have been fortunate for that. In my opinion, a mask ordinance is not needed. I ask the council not to impose such an ordinance on this city. Businesses have already started putting mandates in place, such as Walmart, Target, and countless other businesses around the country have already started doing this on their own without being mandated. Let the businesses decide. We at 54 Country bring over 10,000 people a year to this local community. They eat dinner here, they shop here, they get to see what Fulton is about by coming to our city and coming to our business. What I believe most being lost in this current situation is the mental health crisis going on in our country right now. I believe the mental health crisis is just as serious and takes just as many lives as We provide a safe atmosphere for people of all ages to dance, exercise, and socialize as humans like to do, not just tweet and Facebook fight at each other, they actually get to associate with one another. And I believe that is important. We are a place for kids to be safe, if only for a few hours away from an abusive situation at home. We provide that safety for them and an escape for them, and we are proud of this as well. So sir, I believe we save as many lives just by having the opportunity to do what we do at 54 Country. I believe let the businesses decide because we care about our customers. Thank you, and I also have a petition with me that has over 150 local signatures that support what I am saying here to you tonight. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Kurt.
All right, our final speaker this evening will be Joshua Lococo from 805 Coatsian DeSousen.
Let's see, I'm for the masks, but let's talk about the opposition. They're holding two narratives that contradict each other. If a mask stops oxygen from coming in and going out, then it would have to stop the virus, at least to the degree it does that, because oxygen and carbon dioxide are base molecules. And COVID-19 is a living creature made up of many base molecules. So, there's that. Also, the president tweeted yesterday that patriots wear masks, so no one's a bigger patriot than him, right? Let's make masks great again, right? Oh, well, let's talk about our city and the particular situation we find ourselves in with the colleges, but not only that, Missouri School for the Deaf, that bring people from hotspots to our city, they fraternize and get sent out to other cities that might not be affected. So that means that this city would become a super-spreading epicenter. I'm a little all over the place, but back to masks, the handkerchief mask, why not talk about that? Back in the day, people used to carry them around for what? Sneezes and coughs and blowing your nose. And we live in a society that's become so politicized that people believe that a wall can be built to stop sentient, problem-solving humans, but that a handkerchief cannot stop snot. And that is ridiculous. So, let's see here. Hmm, that's all I had to say. Goodbye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, everyone, for speaking tonight. We appreciate your time and effort to actually show up and get out of your comfort zone, probably for some of you, and again, thanks for coming. We're gonna take a little break, you're welcome to stay, but if you want to jet, that's fine too. We're gonna take about a 10-minute break, we'll reconvene at 7:15. break. We'll reconvene at 7:15. We'll start off with hearing from a few of our key people here. Kent Wood from the Calaway County Health Department, if you would. He's going to just kind of give us a little brief synopsis of where he stands on this issue, where they stand.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you, mayor and council people, for having us here. Appreciate it very much. You know, the Calaway County Health Department, we work very closely with a lot of our elected officials throughout the county, and it's a pleasure to be able to come here tonight and speak to everyone here. You know, the Calaway County Health Department, we strongly encourage the use of masks. We cannot be on one side of this or the other, but we strongly encourage the use of masks. You know, masks are a barrier. Most people want to think of them as some type of a saving grace. They are if you're trying to protect someone else. I think I'm a little bit close there, Bill. I don't know. But we like to make sure that people know we strongly encourage that to protect others. Simple mask, much like this one that my wife made, surgical mask, the ones that are available out there. If they're worn and worn correctly, and there's another issue that's out there that we always need to be reaffirmed on and to be retrained on, how's the proper way to wear a mask? Most people will walk around. If you talk to them, I've seen them in stores where they just grab them, just start talking to you. They'll take them off and start talking to you. That doesn't do anything. If they're wearing them, they pull them down over their nose. Again, you're not doing anything. A mask is supposed to be worn over the face and the mouth as you're talking and as you're around other people. So, you know, please take that into consideration as you're looking at your ordinance. If you decide to do something in an ordinance fashion, just remember you're looking at basically a law, and laws have to be in some way or another. There has to be some form of, there's consequences if you break that law. Who will do the enforcement of that specific problem? If someone does, you know, blatantly breaks that law, they go against your ordinance if you decide to do so. Please, I just want to make this very clear, that the Calaway County Health Department does not have the available staff to do enforcement of this, whether it be in the city or whether it be in the county. At this point, we do not have the staff to be able to do that. So, as you're formulating things, as you're looking at things, whatever decision that you decide to make, take that into consideration, how will your enforcement look? Now, we're going to be here, and I say "we," I mean the Health Department, we're going to be here to give you guidance, give you support, do anything that you need to do to make whatever route that you take successful. If we want to put out and strongly encourage people, however we do that, whether it's through websites, whether it's we put up flyers, whatever the case may be, to get this word out and do a better job at it, we're all about it. We're here to help you to do that. That's what we do. You know, many people said tonight, you know, it takes personable responsibility, and it does. We all have rights. We all have our ability to understand what is right and what is wrong, what can hurt other people and what doesn't. That's something also that we need to kind of enforce as a city, as a county, as a Health Department, to go forward, to try to let people know that if they do take that time to take that personable responsibility, that will make a difference. It really will. You know, there was talk here this evening about the schools, the colleges, the universities, things like that with everybody coming in. I'd just like to let everybody know that there are plans that are being put together, there are, as changes are made through the Department of Health and Senior Services, CDC, all those recommendations, DESI, as they come down. The schools are working daily, hard every day to get this exactly right as they come in. Will there be things that may not go exactly as planned? Sure. But please don't think that our higher education and our school districts are not taking into consideration the safety of our communities, because they are. They are doing a great job at it. We're reviewing plans as they go and working with them on a daily basis. So, please take that to heart, that those folks are really doing everything that they can possibly do to keep everyone safe that's here. You know, masks do, again, they are a barrier. Everybody says, "Well, what about social distancing?" It all goes together, people. We need to social distance. We need to wear the mask. We need to make sure that as we're doing this, that we're thinking about the other people that we're around, not just ourselves. Now, that being said, as you folks decide to make whatever decision you make, whether you want to make this mandatory, whether you want to make this a highly recommended thing within the city, if you want to let the businesses do it, however you want to formulate that to work, we're going to be here to help you. We can't tell you what to do, but we can sure try to help you all we can. And with that, I know that there are others that need to speak tonight. If you don't have any questions or if there's anything else, I will step aside and let the next speaker come up. I do appreciate the time. I do appreciate working with each and every one of you. It's a pleasure to be able to, for all of us to work together, to come together as a community and hear what everybody has to say, get everybody's opinion. And I thank you for letting everybody do that here tonight. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question, if I could. Thanks for being here, Kent, and I appreciate it, as I appreciate everybody being here. I just have a couple of questions that have been asked of me. I don't know the answers. How many contact tracers do we have working in the county right now for?
At our Health Department, we can have anywhere in between three to five, normally three, that will be working constantly. And it depends on our load as it comes in. As we stated earlier, or as was stated earlier, last Wednesday was our busiest time that we've had since this all began. We had nine in one day. We were pretty busy, because there are times that you may have two people, five people, that you have to make contacts with, and some people just say, "Well, I was around 50 people." Let me give you their names, and those all have to be done. It's a daunting task. Our nurses do a fantastic job at it, but anywhere from three to five is normal for us.
Is it something that you guys need more help with? I know that there's dollars out there. The governor has talked about it, asking the commissioners to use the dollars that they received to help you in that matter, whether it's testing, tracing, and everything else. Is that dollars, and it's dollars that, if I understand the government or the governor correctly, and Gary, you could probably help me, that's what the money is for, is it not? So, if that's got to go, then if we need more of it, then...
To answer your question, if we get into a situation, let's just say we had 20 in one day, and we were inundated with the amount of contacts we do, two things. One, we have a memorandum of understanding with our 13-county region F group, where we can call other Health Departments and bring in nurses from there to assist us. If they're going through the same type of crisis that we have, Show Me Response, that we can go through it, through our medical reserve corps here in the county. And if we did get into a situation of, "Hey, how are we going to do that?" I'm going to look at TME, I'm going to look at the commission and just say, "We're going to need some dollars for this. This is what we're going to need to spend, and here's the reason why." But we'll always want to exhaust our, the nurses that are in our region F are very familiar with one another. Yes, they come and go. Not everybody knows everybody. I don't want to imply that we all know each other like we're good buddies, but we all have a general idea of how the Health Departments work. We all know how the contact tracing works, and we all know how to assist one another if we need. So, that's the route that we're going to look at first. And then, again, we have trained professionals through Show Me Response. If we need to get additional help from throughout the state, that we can go back to through our medical reserve corps. We've got a very good medical reserve corps and co-ed here in the county. So, there's more than one route that we can use. When we say that our lines are full, Brother Steve Myers over here has even offered us some phone lines in case we started to get inundated and we needed to bring in additional people, or we could get that assistance there. We're all working as a community, and we've put plans together for years and years. We've practiced, and we've practiced on different things, everywhere from radiological to tornadoes to you name it. This is one of the things that we practice for. Were we ready for this thing, the way it popped up? Absolutely not. I don't know anybody in this country that was, but we did the best with what we can. And our people here in this county do an awesome job, or we wouldn't only be sitting at 84.
Well, and the reason I ask that is I have had people talk to me and contact me and say that some of them would be willing to even volunteer their time to go through the training that's needed to be a contact tracer and volunteer if that help is needed. And I'd be happy to try to get that worked out if there was the need for it.
You know what? I will never turn anybody down that's willing to help, because that's what we try to do, is help the community, and we need help sometimes, too. Get with me sometime or another. I'll get those list of names. We'll work through that, and if they can be of help to us, we can be of help to them. I'm all about it.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much for it. And I do appreciate the other one that you sent out, giving us a little bit of a breakdown. The information, I think that information is powerful. So, thank you.
Thank you. One of the questions that I was thinking about, a lot of businesses, who has the liability? If somebody gets sick, and who carries that liability? Is it the owners or staff that happen to have COVID, and maybe somebody decides, "Hey, because of the people at your place, I got this," and who carries that liability?
Well, not being a lawyer, I hate to answer legal questions. If someone blatantly did something, or let's just say an ordinance was passed and said, "Everyone wears masks and they don't," then there could be a liability issue there. But like I say, not being a lawyer, I don't want to answer legal questions. But this is a virus that is amongst us right now. It's hard to put liability on a virus. It really is, and it would be very difficult unless it was something just so blatant, or warnings had been given over and over, things of that nature. So, I don't know if that answers your questions or not.
I'm thinking about if we pass an ordinance or something of that kind and saying we require all public businesses, people that have businesses, to wear masks, and maybe one of the employees don't, and then that possibility, somebody contracts COVID and... one of the employees don't, and then that possibility, somebody contracts COVID and...
That would have to be, you know, that's more for a legal team more than me, but that, I would tell you that the Health Department would be first and foremost in the investigation of that, providing information to make sure that, yes, this did originate at this spot, to do whatever we need to do as far as the contact tracing, to either remove the liability or to prove the liability. But, you know, as far as a legal answer for that, hey, I'm going to leave that to the guys with the big books.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, thank you for your time again, thank you so much.
For those that don't know, this guy's been doing a phenomenal job, spending countless hours working with this community to answer questions, problem solve, and I see he's kind of lost some hair, I think, but we certainly appreciate all you've done, Kent.
This comes from a guy that has an...
Yeah, yeah. Don't have much room to talk there. Okay, moving on, Tamra, if you would, give us a rundown of what you're hearing from the businesses?
Sorry.
Don't get too close to that microphone either, I think it's been spit on or something.
So thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk. Today, I think you received survey results from the poll that we did for our business chamber members, and that is our chamber members, 420 of them, sent that out to them. We got 93 responses, which was actually more than I expected, because you know how surveys go. According to the survey results, though, you know, the majority of the businesses were not looking for a mask mandate, but as you read on to the comments, a lot of them feel like that there's opportunity for maybe just making a suggestion that we recommend that masks are utilized in our community. And, you know, as a Chamber of Commerce, it is, it's not our job, this is y'all's job. You know, we remain neutral on mask or no mask. But my concern is our business community, and our businesses are suffering. And one of the things that kind of keeps me up at night is, what happens if something really bad starts happening? We have more outbreaks and the numbers increase, and some of these businesses need to shut down. Maybe somebody gets COVID in their business, and they're a small business, and they have to be shut down for 14 days. Some of these businesses can't survive shutting down again. You know, also, the businesses are very concerned about that they're being kind of left out there to mandate, and that's something that keeps them up at night and has a lot of their customers kind of walking away. I think you heard from one today. I know that you all will make the best decision, but I want you to really consider the fact that, you know, our businesses in the community in Callaway County and in Fulton, we were booming in March. We were working on workforce development, we had a lot of great things that were happening, and the last five months has been nothing but trying to maneuver the businesses so that they can stay open, or so that they can at least keep their employees on staff while they try to reopen. You know, we're in the process of, right now, with a lot of CARES Act funding, you know, to help these businesses out, because the small businesses are the ones that need assistance from this. I'm very fearful of what's going to happen if our numbers continue to rise. I'm concerned of what's going to happen if these businesses have to shut down again. They can't shut down again because they can't survive. So it's going to be catastrophic for our businesses, so I need you to think about those things as, you know, we're planning for our future here, and if you have ideas of things that we can do to help our business community, we're all ears. I can answer any questions that you may have on the business side. One thing that you did ask, Mr. Washington, was about legalities of businesses. The businesses are actually responsible for their workforce, and they're responsible for their customers that come inside their doors. Every state around Missouri right now has some sort of coverage for their businesses, but the state of Missouri does not. Right now, there has been a push at the Missouri State Chamber, asking Governor Parson to please call legislation back into session to do something about this legality issue, because if, we don't have it right now, and I don't know of any, but around us, it's happening. And back in, I guess it was end of April, I had called one of our local attorneys here and kind of had a conversation, because I wanted to educate our businesses about it. And so he passed it on to one of his attorneys, and they're very well-known here in our community, and she called me and she said, "You know, whenever he asked me to do this," she said, "I just kind of laughed, because I said, 'This isn't happening.'" You know, "We don't really have any of that that's going on," and after she started doing her research, she went, "Oh, no. This is serious." So we were able to hold a webinar for our businesses. Now, not all businesses got on there, and we've been talking about it and telling our businesses that this is real. It's real for the workforce, and it's real for your customers. So just keep that in mind. Any questions for me?
Yeah, Tamra, one, I'm glad you, the reason why I was asking about the legality and the liability. I'm a pastor of a church here in town, Fulton Church of God in Christ, and they had the ministers and lawyers, they had a meeting, talking about the liability and making sure that we, in compliance, doing our part, making sure we follow regulations and ordinances and whatever is being required from the governor and various ones, to make sure that we are not liable for any, contributing to anyone's situation. So that's the reason I was wondering if businesses were on that same plateau.
Anything else?
Can I just mention, because people at home won't understand, I can't talk with this thing on for a minute, so give me just a second. I want to be clear in the mic, so that's why I'm taking it off. What Tamra said, and the information that she has for people that aren't, that are sitting here and that are listening online, it was 56.9% against and 43% for a mask ordinance.
Yes.
But when you read through the comments, which I read through probably 90% of them, a lot of them had to be the same ones that voted against it, but were saying, "But something needs to be done."
Exactly, yes.
So what is that? I don't know what that something is, so. I just wanted people at home and here, understanding what the numbers were and how they came out. I think that's fair to do that.
And that's why I wanted you all to have the copies, because I didn't want to have to read all of those to you, but I did want you to have the responses from the business community, so that you would know what their perspectives are on this issue.
And thank you for doing it.
No problem. Anything else?
Do you think that there are businesses that if they had access to more masks, that they would be more willing to give them out or require their patrons to use them?
If a business needs masks, we can see that they get some masks. We have CARES Act funding, the county does, and they've already purchased some PPE. So if they need it, we can get it to them.
So do they kind of know that, then, or...
I have, I've sent it out, and we've publicized it some. If they need it, a lot of times they're asking. I mean, for example, the Callaway Senior Center was saying the elderly didn't have any mask in the community, they didn't know where to get it. So we set up a shop out there, had 400 masks donated, and were able to give out masks to our seniors in Callaway County. So, you know, we'll figure it out.
Right on, that's great. I'm just trying to think of, you know, different things we can do to help, so.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tamra.
Thank you, Tamra.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call our police chief, Chief Myers, if you would come up, and I think he's got a couple of things to add to the conversation here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Couple of things, and you kind of made mention a little bit. I can't stress enough how much work this gentleman over here has done along with the rest of the Health Department. We work very, very closely, as the Sheriff's Department does as well, and Clay and I, we talk sometimes daily, and we include Kent sometimes in those conversations when it applies to them. He's always responsive. Back in April, I called him, we had a situation. I think he was in the Turkey Woods. In fact, I know he was in the Turkey Woods. He answered, got right back to me, we got our, we had, one of my officers was in possible contact with a COVID patient, and so he got right back with me and gave me the answers I needed, and he went back hunting, and I took care of what I had to do. So I just can't say enough of what he has done, his staff, and all the staff at our Health Department. They've done an outstanding job. I want to say also, I know you all have got a very difficult decision to make here, and I'm glad that you all are making it, not me. I will say that, at this time, with the manpower we have, and I know with the manpower that Kent has, this ordinance, if passed, would be totally, totally unenforceable, could not enforce it. We just had a, when I stepped out a few minutes ago, we had a man with a gun up on Jefferson Street, and my officers had to respond. Now, I don't think there's anyone in this room that would want them to drop that call and go to someone not wearing a mask. It doesn't make sense to me. Unless we have a lot more manpower, unless someone comes up with a lot of money for more manpower, I can't do it, he can't do it, it's unenforceable. So unless, before you pass something like this, because once we pass it and people start calling, they're going to expect something to be done, and right now, it can't happen. So you've got a long way to go, in my opinion, you have a long way to go as far as staffing. You may have, you know, there's a lot of ways to do this, but before you even think about passing this, you have to staff people, you have to train them, you have to get vehicles for them. I don't know how far this may go. You may even have to have a separate call center. I don't know. It's something that we don't know anything about at this point, and all those things takes lots of money. So I think before anything is done, you're going to have to do a lot of work to prepare some people for this, because, like I said, once you pass this and they start calling and nobody comes, they're going to be very upset, and I couldn't blame them. So you're going to have a lot of work to do, I believe, before you even think about passing this. Any questions?
Do you know what Palmby is doing? How they're trying to enforce this?
I think their Health Department is maybe trying to enforce it. I don't think the...
Yep, and mostly it is complaint-driven at this time. It's not like they have officers going out actively looking, but there is a complaint line set up, and that complaint line is full.
And I doubt if they answer very big percent of those calls, even their Health Department people, they don't have enough either. And they've got, what, 100 and some Health Department employees?
They have several individuals there that they need staff to take over that side. I know the number, but I know that probably the staff that they would use to do that is bigger than my staff. It's probably over. Our employees.
Any other questions?
Very good. Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you all very much.
If you guys wouldn't mind sticking around for a little while, we may have some more questions for you. So at this time, we'll open up discussion. I don't know how we want to really start. I guess we can start with, is anyone in favor of a mask ordinance? A lawful ordinance? If so, we can discuss it. If not, we'll move on.
Mayor, to my understanding, I don't think we were looking to discuss, to looking at passing any mask ordinance, are you...
Right, and I didn't mean passing one, I meant moving forward to investigate one, you had to try to put something together.
Thank you.
Yep, that's what I meant, sorry.
Sorry.
And Mayor, I think there was a lot of confusion earlier tonight, I know, just kind of walking around, trying to listen to the general consensus. I think many people here are very concerned, one way or another, that a decision is going to be made as to whether an ordinance will be enacted tonight. I think we need to clarify that no ordinance has been drafted at this point, and generally, this meeting is to provide a direction for the City Council. So they wanted community input, input from our leaders, input from our health professionals. So tonight is to give us a sense of direction as to where we go from here, just to clarify.
Yep, thank you, Madam Clark. So, I mean, if we want to talk about the mask ordinance, we can. But if no one wants to pursue it, we can move on.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think at this point in time, as our Chief of Police said, we don't have a way to enforce an ordinance. I personally believe that masks do help, and I wish that everyone would wear them when they're not able to stay at least six feet apart. However, I don't see how we can put an ordinance in place that we can't support, that we can't back up at this point in time.
And I think what you just said is key. At this time, things could change, you know, things get a lot worse, which they could. We might be right back here discussing the same thing, so I want that to be very clear.
Also, I would think, you know, any sort of mask ordinance, we need to be considering the rest of the county. This is a pretty rural county. We got Kingdom City, and we got Avos, and Holt Summit, and New Bloomfield, and a lot of little cities in this place, in this county.
And here, I've heard from two of our local communities, and there's not been nearly the feedback or the outcry for a mask ordinance. At this time, there's almost no public outcry for that, for that type of thing at this time. So that, Fulton's, if we're going to do that, we're going to do it on our own, put it that way.
Mr. Mayor, I, of course, you know, I always have a few questions, a few things that I think are important.
That's what we're here for, John.
And I will continue to be that way. I have heard, and I think everyone on the council got the email from a professor at William Wood, excuse me, at Westminster, and his was, is that Westminster is going to mandate that students wear masks on campus. They go back to the dorms, they go to the fraternities, no mask order. So they're looking to protect their staff, is my take on it. A lot of the other questions that I had and talked about have been talked about, and I don't think we need to, in my opinion, beat a dead horse, but 52, or 53.2% of our population in Callaway County is over the age of 35. Now, that's the way it's broke down, so keep that in mind, too. 53% of our population is of an older generation. So I'm counting myself as young in it, but... And CDC does require masks. Excuse me, they recommend masks, not require, it's recommended. With that being said, I would entertain, if anybody else doesn't have anything, I would entertain a motion to make... to make a strong recommendation by the City Council to recommend masks for the citizens of Fulton.
I would second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to recommend a recommendation to the Callaway County group that we've been meeting with. Is that, is that the motion?
We could certainly, I mean, I think that the county, the others, if, if we could get everybody on board in the county with a recommendation, a recommendation is nothing more than the same thing the CDC says is you should do, it's recommended that you do it. Doesn't mandate anything to anybody. But if we could get the rest of the county on board, I would really be, I would be, I myself would be tickle pink with that. And if we can take it from, from 50% to 70% on a recommendation and the numbers dry, continue to drop, so much the better.
And if this, if this goes, if this gets worse, the numbers get worse, then we could come back and may have to do an ordinance. But right now, to recommend, and it would be wonderful if the county, we could all stick together in this. I think that'd be a good way to go right now.
I believe Beth was saying the same thing. Am I correct? You were asking for a recommendation. And that's why I was on that line too, because I think it's, it needs to be, a strong message need to be sent and to our businesses to, because we need to leave it up to the businesses, basically. If they want to encourage, they can make the decisions. One of the things that someone shared with me early on was about their mechanics. And they were saying, if my mechanics had to wear a mask during their, when they're working, that's kind of difficult for them. I said, but the thing about it is this, it's important to educate people to make sure. We only saying if you can maintain that social, social distance, you know, the mask is not necessarily required. You know, wherever you, wherever you work you do. But once you come into a public place or public, where you're going to be within so many feet of someone, then maybe we recommend that you might want to put your mask on and that type of thing. So I, I can support what you were, I agree on that, supporting that.
I know for myself, I don't like wearing a mask, mainly because it fogs up my glasses and I can't see. But if I'm around people in close proximity, like in a grocery store, yeah, I'm going to wear the mask. I'll take my glasses off and I have to read something, I'll put them back on. But I think a lot of the comments, the recommendation is not to protect the person wearing the mask. The recommendation is to protect the other people that are around you. I think we need to have some consideration for the other citizens in this town. You need to wear a mask, not because it protects you so much, because you're protecting your friends, your neighbors, the businesses, just everybody you come in contact with. So I, yes, I think we need to make a very strong recommendation to wear a mask. If the businesses are comfortable saying, you have to have a mask to, to shop at our store, then they should be able to do that.
One of the things that's really tough with this topic is there's, there's almost no middle ground. There's just no common ground where the two different ideals can, can meet in the middle. So it makes it very tough. You, you don't know what to believe sometimes between science versus propaganda. So this is a tough situation, but.
I mean, you can, you can look at all the statistics and, you know, the virus goes through the mask. Yeah, it does, but it's got to have a transport medium, which is like water droplets when you sneeze or when you cough. And those aren't going through the mask very much. If you wear a mask and one person doesn't die from contacting the virus, I think that's a good thing, it's a plus. You know, if one person doesn't get sick, that's a good thing.
Mr. Mayor, I would greatly support the city making a strong recommendation for the citizens of Fulton. I work in healthcare. I work in a hospital. I work with patients that have this virus. I work in the testing tents. I'm wearing a mask this evening to protect you because I spent time with people who have this virus. And this virus does kill. This virus also exacerbates many other conditions that will kill you. But people do die of this virus. If we can't enforce a law, then we shouldn't pass a law.
I agree.
But we have the ability to influence the town. We have, the numbers, they're not many. I heard a new number, 84. I guess we have three new cases today. We've gone from 56 to 84 in less than two weeks. Just in that number, it's a significant rise. But 84 out of 45,000 is not very many. We need to strongly recommend that people continue to do everything that they possibly can do to protect themselves and protect each other. And if the numbers keep going up, then we still have an outlet and we can find the resources to enforce a law that we may need to enforce in the future. That's my recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Possibly in the meantime, we could spend a little bit of time researching that, what that could look like if, if that were to take place. You know, I know Kent would be willing to do that and our staff could be at least trying to figure if that's even feasible or possible to do.
Mr. Mayor, yes, I, I, I'm along those lines too, because you got to, we have to have a trigger. What's going to trigger us to really, so we got to have a plan. What's going to trigger us to go to the next level? If this rises as you were saying, it rises up to now we know that we're going, it's going to trigger us to go ahead and do this. And then what's going to allow us to keep that, that ordinance if we decide to come up with an ordinance and like that? But like you said, how are you going to enforce it and things like that? So we do need a plan of how are we going to, where are we going to get the resources, the money, those types of things to support our next level of move if we have to go in that, if we go in that direction.
It seems like every step we've taken during the COVID crisis, we've asked that same question. What, where are we going to jump off the cliff at the next point to do the next thing?
Okay.
And I think society kind of, it almost dictates that. So I don't know. It's, it's a moving target, put it that way.
Mr. Mayor, I think we've done that very well. We enacted a state of emergency at the time that we needed to enact a state of emergency in this town. We took many actions based upon that state of emergency. Things change, things progress, things lessen. We were able to allow that state of emergency to expire. And now we can look at, maybe this is one more line item that's within that state of emergency if we hit the point that we have to reenact that. I think those are some great ideas and some great ways to, to gauge our level of response based upon the data, based upon the information and based upon what our town wants us to do.
And see what happens, what takes place when, when we get 1,200 kids coming back to town.
Yes.
They might be looking forward to coming back to our town away from the places they are now.
Just for some educational purposes, could you or perhaps our clerk could, could speak to the process? What that would look like, how we could get to passing an ordinance if we felt we needed to get to that point? How would that appear? Because I think there's a, unfortunately, there's a lot of misnomers that float around that we come into the chambers and decisions are made immediately. And, and that's, unfortunately, that's untrue. But I would like some education, maybe from either one of you or anyone really on the council who could kind of explain what those processes would look like and what avenues we could take.
That's a great question for Courtney.
All right. I thought you would probably head down that path. So let's say that we find ourselves in a situation where we feel an ordinance, or the City Council feels an ordinance is necessary. Essentially, I would be directed by the mayor or at a meeting, the City Council might make a motion to draft an ordinance to that effect. We would need time to draft an ordinance. That's obviously something that's very complex, that would take time. Mayor Cantle did an interview earlier today with a radio station and noted that a lot of cities utilize the same ordinances. So there are model ordinances out there that we could definitely work off of, but those need to be tailored to Fulton's specific needs. When we look at ordinances, and I've heard it said many, many times here, it's a law. It is a law, that's exactly what it's here for. So that's why we need to take the time to not only look at it as a city council, but also provide time for legal review to make sure that what we're enacting is in fact legal and that there are no liability issues that come along with that. An ordinance requires three readings and a vote by the City Council in order to be passed. Here, our city charter says that we can do the first reading and then we have to have at least a week between that first reading and the last reading. So it's going to take two meetings in order to actually pass an ordinance, unless it is passed as an emergency measure in which case we could pass it all in one meeting. Regardless, the City of Fulton obviously operates under the Missouri Sunshine law. We are required to give you 24-hour notice when we are going to have a meeting, when we're going to have a quorum of members that will be present. So it will always be a situation where my office will draft the ordinances. We will put out enough notice so that the community is aware that there will be a decision that will made, will be made. I think that's why too, earlier this evening, I wanted to clarify, we're not passing an ordinance tonight. There was a lot of misinformation and I think sometimes social media and just everyone hearing a little bit of this and a little bit of that, it gets confusing. So I would also use this opportunity and platform to say, if you're ever not sure as a citizen or as a council member or someone who lives in the county, if you're not sure where we are in this process, please feel free to call City Hall. This is local government, this is why we're here. We do work for our community, we do work for you and we can answer those questions. Every person that was elected to sit up here works for you, just the same as the staff up here works for you. So local government only works if our citizens are also actively involved in that process. So please, if you're ever unsure, please call, please call, we're happy to answer those questions for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Courtney.
Very good, I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion on this? Would anybody like to, else like to be heard on this topic?
Yes, I would now.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm sorry. I meant from our council. I cannot make exceptions.
The only other thing that I'd like to say, Mr. Mayor, is I appreciate everybody's emails, texts, phone calls. I don't care whether you're for or against it, I do appreciate it. And the crowd that was here tonight, it doesn't matter whether you're for or against. If we had this more often, a lot of people would be a lot more informed what happens in this community. So I do appreciate it.
I wish to share that too. Thank you very much, John. Contact me whenever, I'm here to help.
Very good. Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Okay, we'll send a recommendation. We'll get that group together again very soon. I will also echo the same sentiments that we appreciate the, the participation of our citizens on this topic. I know some are not going to be happy, but please understand that, that we're, we're in a tough spot and that we, we, we are here to listen and make our best judgment possible for the City of Fulton. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.